The City Council, today is Wednesday, July 22. If I can have everyone stand for the pledge to the flag, please? Okay, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, Madam City Clerk, may I have a roll call, please?
Ms. C. Giovanni. Ms. Manalo.
Present.
Dr. Rod.
Here.
Mr. Breena Ventura.
Present.
Mr. Sylvester.
Glenn Sylvester, present. Thank you very much. All right, the item on the agenda for this evening is a resolution supporting the Black Lives Matter movement and reaffirming the city of Daly City's commitment to racial equity. And what I would like to do is turn it over to our city attorney for discussion and an update, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is an item on the agenda for the special meeting regarding a resolution for council determination supporting the Black Lives Matter movement and reaffirming the city of Daly's council commitment to racial equality. There was a draft resolution that was attached to the agenda essentially for the council for further discussion and whether or not the council would like to add or have further questions and discussions in regards to the resolution. I don't have anything in addition in terms of a staff report. This is for the councils to have determination.
All right, thank you, Madam City Attorney. Did everyone on council receive a draft copy of the resolution? And if so, do we have any questions, additional concerns, omissions, additions?
Mr. Mayor, I did receive it and thank you for sharing that from the staff. For me, I think, you know, the resolution is embodying what we want in support of Black Lives Matter and also showing what Daly City is about. And so, I only have, I have one comment on, whereas five. I'd like to add Ahmaud Arbery and Breonna Taylor and countless others through there. So, that's, that's what I'd like to have as a change on that. Whereas five, in addition, is add Ahmaud Arbery, Breonna Taylor, and countless others. Through, instead of through him, it's through there.
Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor. Any other comments? And we can take the comments and speak about each one of the recommended changes. Are there any other recommended changes at this time? Okay, I have one. And I'm concerned.
They're like moving way faster.
I'm sorry?
I had muted a participant. It was just background noise.
Okay, thank you, Stephen. I feel in particular that even though it's stated here, the treatment of city residents and tried to bolster the overall well-being of the city by fostering the rights of people of color who have been historically disadvantaged and structural racism. I want to make sure that we are not being exclusive of not just only people of color, but for all people here in our city. So, that's the comment I have. And I'll open it up for any additional comments before we go through each one of them. Are there any other comments at this time? Okay, hearing none. I'd like to move with.
Mayor, sorry, Mayor.
Yes.
Mine was on mute. Sorry about that, Mayor. I support this resolution. I think it's well-written. I think that although I respect your position on adding like all Lives Matter, I think in particular to this historical context is to bring forth the light of the historical and institutional oppression that has happened. You know, I don't think it's, we're excluding people. I think is what we're doing is that we're highlighting that there is a problem. Right? It's kind of like people that are part of like 12-step program. You don't know you have a problem until you say that you have a problem. And I think with that, I think that's what that statement is trying to say is that we are both thinking, yes, it is about everybody, but it's certainly talking and shedding light on the experiences of people of color that have been historically oppressed.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Rod. Okay, are there any other comments at this time?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I actually agree with Dr. Rod. I do believe that this resolution is stronger if we target and identify Black Lives as the central issue. I was, there was a resolution that was done a while back on the discrimination that was faced by Asian-Americans when the coronavirus pandemic was breaking out and there was a lot of finger-pointing and expression of discrimination and hate towards Asian-Americans. There was a resolution that was put forward denouncing that and language that said basically that we are objecting to this kind of treatment and it was specific to the Asian-American. There was a request to make it more broad and say that we object to discrimination of all people. But that, to me, dilutes the message and it's not as strong if you just are expressing, even though we all believe no one should be discriminated, but by casting a more broader scope, I think dilutes the message and the very purpose why we're doing this resolution in support of Black Lives Matter. So, I agree that it shouldn't, should not be diluted in that sense. I should, I think it should be specific to Black Lives. And so, I would not, I would not want us to move away from making broader language and sweeping it under a broader scope. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Breena Ventura. Okay, are there any other comments thus far?
Mr. Mayor, I am also in agreement with, you know, focusing on the resolution at hand and, you know, it is a stronger message of support and adding all, I think, would stray away from our intent this evening. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Vice Mayor. All right, so it looks like we started to go off, well, not really off on a tangent, but my plan was to take these items if we had any comments. And I guess we had gotten more comments on the issue of the racial equality and the scope. However, what I would like to do is go back to the original comment first made by the Vice Mayor and engage in discussion in reference to item, I believe it was number five, where it was requested the inclusion of others as well. So, I'll start off first with my comment. Obviously, to me, the issue about George Floyd has definitely caused an awareness, not only here in California, throughout our nation and internationally as well. Given that there has been, if you want to term it discrimination, unwrongful deaths, and all the other matters that have occurred within the past three to four hundred years, I feel that having to include additional names under this would not really be strong enough. What has precipitated this movement was definitely the unwarranted and the death of Mr. George Floyd. We do not have the full accounting of all the others. We do not have the full accounting of all the others that have been killed. And where do we draw the line? Do we have to continue, do we also place others who have been discriminated or have lost their lives within the past two hundred years? Why would we need to add additional names? We already know that this travesty that happened to Mr. Floyd is basically what has precipitated this and to cause awareness. And so that's my thought. Okay, so I'll entertain any debate and additional comments on item number five on the whereas statement.
I'll add something, Mr. Mayor. I think it's important to say their names so they're not forgotten. Like when we talk about bringing forth the justice, when we talk about Breonna Taylor and although those officers have been fired, they have been charged for murder. And when we say their names, we don't forget their names. It's almost kind of like when we talk about the Jewish Holocaust and we say we don't forget their names and we say every person's name that has been lost. And I think when we talk about Black Lives Matter, it's up to that certain level of intensity that we need to put their names out there so we don't, so that we remember them. And when we remember them, we don't make the same mistake again.
Thank you. Any additional comments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I agree with Dr. Rod again. And I think in terms of the public knowledge and discord on these issues, I think there is plenty of material information with respect to all the other cases that, that the community, that the world really knows about. And so there is enough information to know that what happened to Breonna Taylor, to the other individuals, was wrong. And also, even though some haven't been prosecuted and some, the investigation is still ongoing. Well, George Floyd's investigation is still ongoing. It hasn't come to a final decision on what happened. And the police officers in that case are being investigated and grand, an indictment was handed down. And so nothing has been finalized. And I don't think we need to wait for finality to pass a resolution that tells the community that we support black lives and these are the names of the black lives that we have been thinking about and are honoring by this resolution. And remember, when, when, and I know you, Mayor, have been involved and have gone to these protests, they are saying Breonna Taylor's name out loud. They are saying Michael Brown, they're saying Trayvon Martin. And so, and the reason why they're saying it's because that's what they're thinking in their mind when it comes to Black Lives Matter. It's not just limited to the George Floyd incident. So I wholeheartedly agree. Actually, I even think there are more names should be added than what the Vice Mayor just indicated. But so that's just my thought. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Buena Ventura. Any other comments on this?
Mr. Mayor, the intention of adding was definitely to honor these individuals' lives who were taken away from them. And, and as also mentioned by my colleague, you know, if we can add more lists. But I think what has transpired over the course of what happened with George Floyd and Ahmaud Arbery and Breonna Taylor, that there was, you know, this is happening all over and these incidents just were so close together in a timeframe that really galvanized, you know, action and it's important to honor them through this resolution.
All right, thank you. Okay, make a rebuttal. I feel that we are using the incorrect term of honoring folks who have lost their lives. The particular circumstances as to how it transpired, they're all different. And I understand that this resolution is bringing to light black lives. There are many others who have lost their lives as a result, but I'm going to stick with the subject here and pertain to black lives. Where do we draw the line on adding names? Dr. Martin Luther King, do we add his name as well? Do, how far do we go back? Why do we have to stop at just what is presented here by adding a few names? So that's, that's my thoughts on it. I feel again that George Floyd and what happened is what brought us here today. What has brought to focus in all of our minds is how many other countless deaths, whether it is justified, whether it is unjustified. But we are definitely and most likely all on the same page that we feel, even though in the court of law, it has not been adjudicated yet, that the taking of the life of George Floyd was definitely unjustified. And that's my stance. So the issue we have here is, do we add additional names? And if so, how many?
So I'm fully supported of adding all the names that has precipitated this movement and the names of the people who have been killed. So, you know, if we want to add Breonna Taylor, Michael Brown, Trayvon Martin, I mean, I have no objection to adding as many names to that resolution as possible. And so I'm sure we can pull up a list of all the recent killings and we can add it on there. So I don't, I just, I don't see a problem with doing that. I don't think it dilutes the message. I think it adds to it. And so I'm really not sure there's a line to be, to be drawn. I mean, I think it's, it's good that, that people know their names and attach it to this movement and have it in our resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Buena Ventura. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, can I, may I comment as well?
Sure.
Yes, I agree with Councilmember Buena Ventura on this as well. I think a lot of times when we, we talk about like Black Lives Matter, it's, it's more than just the leaders and I think that's what Black Lives Matter is about. It's like this decentralized sense of leadership where the masses are important, right? So when we talk about the importance of counting their names, let's put them on. I mean, what do we have to lose besides more ink on a paper or more names on a piece of paper? I mean, I was looking at the city of Brisbane and they have a whole list of it. And I, again, I'm going back to this whole like metaphor of like a 12-step program. We got acknowledged that there is an issue out here. And by acknowledging their names, we're acknowledging that there's an issue that we have to combat. And we talk about Black Lives Matter, police brutality is the tip of the iceberg. But when we talk about the numbers of people, of black and brown bodies that are incarcerated and people making millions of dollars off of them, of being incarcerated, that's the bigger picture. You know, this is a business. And I feel like these deaths are highlighting the inequities in society in terms of the prison industrial complex to the poor schools that are, that are institutionalized, to the deaths in COVID-19 because we have inaccessible medical insurance. And so to me, I feel like more names we have out there, it highlights that this is an issue. This is urgent. Nobody wants to wait anymore. They want to put these names out there. It's important. And just like how we, like in 9/11, when we say people's names on 9/11, this is, this is the 9/11 that's been going on for 400 years. So for me, I feel like if we have to put more names to show that this is an urgent cause, then we need to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rod. So again, my question is, how many names do we put? How far back do we go? And do we only include black lives? Any thoughts on that?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. So I think, and I'm, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna propose the names because I, I think I have it at the tip of my fingers. Ahmaud Arbery, Michael Brown, Eric Gardner, Oscar Grant, Freddie Gray, Trayvon Martin, Tamir Rice, Breonna Taylor. So those are the names that I have, that at least initially in my thought process, but I'm open to adding any more beyond that.
Okay. Any other thoughts, comments? Do we put it back on council to provide the city attorney with these additional names?
No, I think we could just make a motion to add the names and we decide.
I understand, but you've mentioned a few names right now and there may be other names that council members would like to add to that list. So.
Then they should speak now and let's pass the resolution.
All right, are there any other names that should be placed? Well, we're gonna have to take a vote on this first before we add the additional names. It is, to my understanding, the question that was originally brought up was from the Vice Mayor to add additional names. So before moving on, we should call the question. We did not receive a second. We received only that their support to add additional names. So does any one of the council members want to be, move on with this? Of the adding of additional names, I believe the Vice Mayor was requesting that. So it's my understanding, Vice Mayor, you had made, you're basically making the motion. And is there a second?
Mr. Mayor, if I may just add, this is an item that has a regular voting. So to the extent that there is public comment before voting and making a motion, we would need to take those public comments before actually taking a vote.
Oh, okay. Yeah, yeah, that does sound reasonable. I did not recall that we allow public comment in the study session?
Well, this particular item, given that the council wanted to actually make a motion, we did agendize this to be a special meeting that allowed for a vote, which requires a public comment period and public comments prior to a vote.
Thank you so much, Madam City Attorney. All right, so, well, we do have, we first have, we should have a motion on the floor and I'm assuming the Vice Mayor is making that motion. Before we move to public comment and taking a, a vote on the matter, in order to move forward, we should have a second. Would you agree with that?
Actually, sorry, go ahead.
I was gonna, I was gonna ask for a friendly amendment to the, to the Vice Mayor's motion of adding the name she identified to include the names I've identified and amending her motion. And then if she agrees to that, I'll second.
Okay. Vice Mayor, amenable to that?
Yes, I actually, prior to Councilmember Buena Ventura, I was going to ask the mayor for a friendly amendment in exactly what you mentioned, Councilmember. So I'd like to make an amendment to include the names Ahmaud Arbery, Breonna Taylor, and also the names mentioned by my colleague, Councilmember Raibah Buena Ventura. And at the end, the countless others, because we know there's been so many.
Okay. Thank you, Vice Mayor. We have a first amended motion and it was second by Councilmember Buena Ventura. We've already had discussion, but we're gonna reopen it up to discussion after we hear from public comments. So at this particular time, I would like to open it up to the public for comments.
Mayor, we have four people who are in our Zoom meeting that would like to speak live. We have four that possibly might want to say something. And then I have nineteen comments received online. So.
Okay, why don't we move forward? Thank you, Stephen. While we move forward for the, those who are online at this time and then we can address the comments that were written and sent in.
Got it. Okay, so the first person is Shereen Malakavali. Sorry, Shereen, I'm mispronouncing there.
No, that's okay. I appreciate you trying. Hi, I'm Shereen Malakavali. I am calling in as a resident of Daly City. And I really want to, one, thank you for and appreciate putting this kind of resolution forward to really share the, the meaning and value of and support of Daly City for Black Lives Matter, the protests, the systemic racism acknowledgement and oppression that's been happening. I do think it's important to call out people of color, black lives specifically in this effort. There are clearly, the numbers show that there have been a different set of challenges for people of color. And I think that should be highlighted. I also want to point to the fact that, you know, reading the resolution, while I deeply appreciate it, it also, the question that keeps rising for me is how? Each, you know, a lot of the whereas statements, we support black lives, it would be good to know how. It doesn't, you know, we don't, we don't tolerate police brutality. We'd like to know more around the how. We're committed to a form of discussion. You don't, I don't think it has to be all solidified, all the commitments made, but there had been a discussion of a potential commission or board or advisory body that would really help think this through. But I am slightly disappointed that the resolution would come through without any specific action-oriented items that we could feel like is a real commitment. I don't think that, I think that would really, having some action-oriented, whether it's a whereas we commit to holding an advisory council to discuss actions that will resolve the statements that are, that will showcase the statements that we've made, something that shows that we're taking a step forward, that's focused on action, that will change how we operate, that would make me feel like it's a resolution that really has teeth. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Stephen, please go on to the next person. And I'd like to remind everyone that you have a two-minute time limit, please. Thank you.
Okay, I will be timing on my phone. I know that my alarm doesn't really sound through here, so I will just interject when the two minutes have expired. And the next person is Holly Lim.
Good evening. My name is Holly Lim and I'm a Daly City resident. Thank you for putting this resolution forward. I would really like to ask you all to pass a stronger resolution in support of black lives. Currently, it lacks explicit commitments to establish a community police oversight commission. Currently, it lacks explicit commitments to establish a community police oversight commission and to reallocate some DCPD funds towards much needed community services like affordable housing, libraries and the community service center. I really would hope that you would add these actions to the resolution as part of the commitments already listed. I also think you could add language, like to never increase the police budget again. Also, I think if you pass this resolution, you are demanding justice. But justice also demands integrity. If you vote for a resolution for black lives, will you also open your hand and receive money from the police for your campaigns? Mayor Sylvester and Councilwoman Manala, you're both up for reelection. In 2016, you both received almost $8,000 each from the police. In 2018, the largest campaign contribution came from the police. It makes me wonder if that's why it took two months to get something so simple as a resolution on the agenda. Will your campaigns accept contributions again from the police this year? And will that affect how you move forward with actions that really do support black lives? Justice demands integrity. So please vote yes on an amended resolution that includes an oversight commission and the reallocation of DCPD funds towards community services and resources. I'm looking to all of you for leadership to ensure a thoughtful and community participatory process as we figure this out together. Thank you.
Uh, did I freeze up? Stephen, are you there?
I'm sorry, I was muted, everyone. The next person that wanted to speak is Joanna Rosales.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, here we go.
Thank you, Stephen. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members and city staff. My name is Joanna Rosales and I'm a Daly City resident. I come to you in support of tonight's resolution, supporting black lives and the city's commitment for racial equity. I understand this is a statement of solidarity and it aims to continue the conversation within our community. And while it is a step in the right direction, I'd like to ask you, what are the action items in this resolution? The section in the resolution that starts with be it further resolved, lists general actions such as not tolerating racial injustice, creating a safe community or acknowledging the history of institutional racism that exists in America. It's not clear on how these will be implemented. The resolution you passed on June 22 to support the ethnic studies model curriculum in schools is a great start. That refers to education, which is extremely important, but how else do you plan on addressing the root causes of inequality? There are no explicit commitments to reallocate Daly City police funding to go to community services, to create an oversight or human rights commission, or to even reimagine public safety and what it could look like in our community, which have all been repeatedly suggested to the city council via email, a petition with over 400 signatures and comments submitted by the public. In closing, I'd like to request to amend the resolution to include concrete action items or next steps, or if you can provide the clarity in this meeting. Again, my questions are what are the action items in this resolution and how do you plan on addressing the root causes of inequality? Thank you.
Okay, the next person is Christopher Brown.
Good evening, uh, council members. I'm Chris Brown, I'm also a resident of Daly City and have been involved in public policy for the past couple decades at various levels of government. And I too want to just echo some of the comments earlier made about lack of commitment and more action described in the resolution. While it's great that the city put forth an acknowledgement, an acknowledgement without action is usually futile. And we, I think we, we have to really keep that in mind, especially in this moment. We don't want to be seen as a community that doesn't plan to actually move anything toward action. A couple of ideas that could be helpful while we still try to figure things out could be agency commitments. City agencies who are saying, we want to study this problem more to figure out how our various systems that we administer and operate may have bias in them. They have examples of what people are referring to as structural racism and discrimination and disparity. That could be a bold initial first step, right? Some, some, some commitments to action to really understand how various agencies may be contributing to a problem and how in, in to start to develop plans to implementing strategies to address those disparities or, or effects. Um, I also wanted to uh briefly on the idea or notion of conflating the issue of, of Black Lives Matter and as an acknowledgement in conflating that with this idea of all lives matter. I'll remind this council that our US Constitution already says all lives matter. In our Declaration of Independence and our US Constitution, we repeatedly talk about liberty and pursuit of happiness for all of our citizens. However, what we were reminded in this moment, right, is that decade after decade, century after century, we are reminded that all lives probably are not being, are, are not mattering the same. And so in this moment, for us to try to repeat something that's already stated in our US federal constitution would be a missed opportunity in this moment. We need to actually say, black lives matter for a reason because we know and recognize and want to acknowledge that we have overlooked this population. We deserve it. And so I'll end there and, and, and really hope that we can go, go further. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, the next person is Kai Lee.
Hi, everyone. I'm not gonna undo my video because I look pretty bad right now, but I did just want to say that I agree with uh some of the other people on here. When they said that the resolution, it needs a how, like how, how are we gonna show that Black Lives Matter? And um I think like a lot of other people on here, probably, um, they see that in the police budget, like we see the police budget takes up 40% of Daly City's budget. And that just, that doesn't seem right. That doesn't seem like it reflects that we care about the community. It's reflects that we want to criminalize the community. And I don't, I don't think that that is necessarily reflective of everyone's values here. Also, DCPD is not showing in the budget reports that its large amount of resources are actually keeping residents of Daly City here safe. Oh, I want to say I'm a Daly City resident. I think I forgot to say that. But yeah, I think that we could move those funds towards community services like affordable housing, libraries, parks, like, you know, uh, things that actually like go into the community. And we know that like community safety is much more likely to occur when people's needs are being met. So I want to see the budget reflect that and add that item to the resolution. Uh, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next person we have registered to speak is Christine Fuller.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, City Manager, City Attorney, City Staff, Members of the Public. Forgive me for not showing my face. I was uh vividly ill today. I would like to thank all of you who have worked on this important resolution for the Black Lives Matter movement. I've been listening and participating in almost every city council meeting and study session in relation to the Black Lives Matter movement, which is a global issue. I would like to address some concerns that I found on the draft resolution letter herein. Some of the paraphrasing is vastly different from other cities like Rod, council member Rod stipulated, um, in addition to the Board of Supervisors, um, that had drafted a, a Black Lives Matter letter resolution. Um, there are a couple sentences that I've heard and appear to contain language spoken from public petitioners. I even went back to one of the council meetings where uh council member Rod uh read a petition uh of defunding the DCPD and reallocating funds. I want to ensure and ask our city attorney or someone um on council, are these telegraphing just a one sided petition? The first statement was, but also in the areas of healthcare, education, housing, economic opportunity and environmental impacts. The second was commits to move forward with efforts that shall include reviewing police, policing policies, excuse me. So to be fair, um, there's two presiding arguments, but I've also heard there's hundreds of clear opposition letters on record from Daly City residents to not defund DCPD and not have an oversight committee or human rights committee. So I want to be clear in this resolution that these are not um telegraphing or have a de facto ruling and want to ensure it's not leaning towards either commissions. Um, and really just be about Black Lives Matter here in this resolution. Thank you guys so much. Wish you all well.
Thank you.
Okay, um, with, those are all the people that registered and said that they wanted to speak. There were some maybes on the list is if, if any of those maybes have, have decided to speak, maybe you could just raise your hand. Um, otherwise I could go to the online. I could go to the online comments.
Thank you. Please do.
Okay, there are 20 comments, so bear with me here. The first one is from Jeanette Armus and it says, while I think it's great to start, it's, it's, while I think it's great start that there's a resolution in support for Black Lives Matter movement, the resolution falls short of being something meaningful that will enact positive change. As I read through the resolution, I found myself asking, how will you show your commitment to racial equality? This is not well addressed in the resolution. The only specific action written is to review the policing policies and engage with dialogue with residents. But we've already done that with the past two study sessions and no real changes happened. Even though you've engaged with the residents, the commitment to listen and implement what we've demanded has not yet happened. Please revise the resolution to add the community's desire for a community oversight commission, a human rights commission, and to reallocate some of DCPD funds to community services like social services, affordable housing and youth programs. The next comment is from Hiba Hamudeh and it says, addressing reallocating funds from the police department and invest in our communities. Policing does not address, nor is a solution for homelessness, poverty, lack of healthcare slash mental health resources, the struggles our students go through, et cetera. We do not need more policing. What we need is to reinvest in our community. Please address this issue. The next comment is from Sydney Brooks. It says, as a staff member of Daly City Library and Recreation, we could greatly use the reallocated money from the DCPD funds. It saddens me that less kids come each year because parents can no longer afford to put their kids in SYRP, the Summer Youth Recreation Program. And that each year, our programs continue to get cuts. And as someone who has been in SYRP since they were a kid, everyone in our city should have the opportunity to go. The next comment is from Aristel De La Cruz. It says, greeting city council, I am an employee in the neighboring city of South San Francisco. I work with young people and care deeply about the safety of our surrounding community. I especially care about black lives and the lives of people who have been unjustly killed and murdered by police officers. I have held a deep concern for our prison system in America with having the highest number of incarcerations among the developed countries. The criminalization of poverty, addiction, mental health and race has resulted in the ongoing protests in the recent weeks and in the years prior. We have reached a boiling point in which every city in this nation much must confront its own racial biases as it has shaped much of how we see and live in this current time. I urge the council to support the resolution, expressing their support for black lives and to continue to think deeply while considering the data and research and how they can move forward in genuinely implementing non-police alternatives to ensure public safety and ending mass incarceration. What people are asking for is not some imagined reality that doesn't exist. Other countries have officers that are unarmed with accountability measures in addition to prisons that have a very low recidivism rate. Daly City has an opportunity to be a leader, adopting new policies and practices that invest in the people and acts to address economic inequality among other factors as the root causes of crime. I hope this resolution ushers in a further discussions and policies that ensure the physical, mental, cultural and collective safety of the community. Aristel De La Cruz. Um, the next comment is from Marcelo Rivera. It says, good evening, city council and mayor Sylvester. My name is Marcelo Rivera and I am a Daly City community member. It is time for our city to reimagine the future and to do this, we must protect and put black lives first. Our city is made up of many different people, but right now it is especially important to listen to BIPOC leaders and understand their call for defunding the police. In Daly City, 41% of our budget is dedicated to the police department. This is ludicrous. Our growing city needs resources for its youth and aging populations. If we engage with our community by divesting from the police budget, our city will become a safer community. I encourage you to pass a strong resolution in support of black lives. As it stands, the current resolution doesn't make any commitments to lay the groundwork to establish a community oversight commission, establish a human rights commission and to reallocate some DCPD funds towards community services like affordable housing, libraries, parks and rec and the community service center. Please add these actions as part of your commitment in the resolution. Best, Marcelo Rivera. The next comment is from Liliana Rivera. It says, hello, city council. I am writing as a concerned local resident on behalf of your support of the Black Lives Matter movement. While I do not live in Daly City, I go there frequently for work and have several family members who live there. If you are willing to stand up and say that Black Lives Matter, please understand that this must also extend to your policies and your budget. 41% of the Daly City budget goes to police. Why? So many black Americans have died needless, needlessly at the hands of police. So please be willing to make the connection and demonstrate your commitment to racial and ju- racial justice by divesting from poli- policing and investing more in social services. This is what truly keeps communities safe. I would also urge you to create a police oversight committee that has termination power and centers the voices of black Daly City residents. Thank you for your consideration. Please do your part as elected officials and make a stride in the right direction. Um, the next comment is from Russell Lee. It says, good evening, city council and mayor Sylvester. My name is Russell Lee and I am a South San Francisco resident, born and raised, who's always had friends and fond memories in Daly City growing up. Let's reimagine and create a safer community for all of us, especially for black lives. The safest communities in America are places that don't center the police. In Daly City, we center the police with 41% of the city's budget going to DCPD, the largest allocation of any kind for our city. Let's shift massive spending on police that do not keep us safe and instead reinvest in human services that meet our community's needs. We have a similar dilemma in South San Francisco as well as a majority of cities across the country. We have historically focused on policing in our society to curb crime and have not fully explored other options, more reparative and restorative options to both heal communities of color and to stop further damaging them through patrols, arrests and the demeanors of armed officers as they respond to many calls that they are not equipped to handle. I've been on a ride along before in my city and 100% of the calls that night did not require a weapon. If they carry weapons for the 3% of cases, they need them, then they're intimidating and spreading fear to those 97% of people, mostly black, black and brown youth, who have to make sure not to make any sudden moves or an officer could shoot. It's fear, plain and simple. Our society, how we get about our days runs on the love of our families and friends. How our government enforces order is not improving mutual understanding between residents. Personal relationships are what really prevent you from punching that person by using armed fear to perpetuate a cycle of mistrust, underdevelopment and resulting in the breaking of laws in the communities who deserve so much more. I encourage you to pass a strong resolution to support, in support of black lives. As it stands, the current resolution doesn't make any commitments to lay the groundwork to establish a community oversight commission, establish a human rights commission and to reallocate some DCPD funds towards community services like affordable housing, libraries, parks and rec and the community service center. Please add these actions as part of your commitment in the resolution. Please ensure a thoughtful to the brand and community participatory process as we figure out how to do this together. Thank you, Russell. The next comment is from Gustavo Lopez. It says, good evening, city council and mayor Sylvester. My name is Gustavo Lopez and I am a San Bruno resident, but many of my friends and students reside in Daly City. Let's reimagine and create a safer community for all of us, especially for black lives. The safest communities in America are places that don't center the police. In Daly City, we center the police with 41% of the city's budget a lot going to DCPD, the largest allocation of any kind for our city. Let's shift massive spending on police that do not keep us safe and instead reinvest in human services that meet our community's needs. We are facing one of the worst pandemics in our lifetimes, but as even worse will be the economic recession that our communities will face next fall and spring. It is time to divest from police and invest into the community. We demand an increase in budgets to programs not connected to the DCPD as they are not experts in addressing the economic and social needs of residents. We want to see Daly and Daly City invest in organizations that are experts in mental health, counseling, after school programming, violence prevention, career development, healthcare and other social programs that address the needs of the community. I encourage you to pass a strong resolution in support of black lives. As it stands, the current resolution doesn't make any commitments to lay the groundwork to establish a community oversight I encourage you to pass a strong resolution in support of black lives. As it stands, the current resolution doesn't make any commitments to lay the groundwork to establish a community oversight commission, establish a human rights commission, and to reallocate DCPD funds towards community services like affordable housing, libraries, parks and rec, and the community service center. Please add these actions as part of your commitment in the resolution. Please ensure a thoughtful deliberative and community participatory process as we figure out how to do this together. Thank you, Gustavo Lopez, former San Mateo County educator. The next one is from Jeanette Yu. Black Lives Matter is not a political stance, but a movement to ensure that black lives are protected and respected. While this resolution is a step in the right direction, I ask you to also include the reallocation of police funds to community services as an additional commitment of the resolution. Next comment is from Kayliana Hui. Good evening. Good evening, City Council and Mayor Sylvester. My name is Kayliana Hui, and I am a family member of a Daly City resident. Let's reimagine and create a safer community for all of us, especially for black lives. The safest communities in America are places that don't center the police. In Daly City, we center the police with forty-one percent of the city's budget going to DCPD and the largest allocation of any kind for our city. Let's shift massive spending on police that do not keep us safe and instead reinvest in human services that meet our community needs. Crime isn't random. Most of the time, it happens when someone has been unable to meet their basic needs through other means. So to really fight crime, we don't need more cops. We need more jobs, more educational opportunities, more arts programs, more community centers, more mental health resources, and more of a say in how our communities function. It's not just that the police are ineffective. In many communities, they're actually harmful. The history of policing is a history of violence against the marginalized. American police departments were originally created to dominate and criminalize communities of color and poor white workers, a job they continue doing to this day. The list has grown even longer. LGBT folks, people with disabilities, activists, so many of us are attacked by cops on a daily basis, and it's bigger than just police brutality. It's about how the prison industrial complex, the drug war, immigration law, and the web of policy, law, and culture that forms our criminal justice system has destroyed millions of lives and torn families apart. Cops don't prevent crime, they cause it through the ongoing violent disruption of our communities. Most social service agencies and organizations that could serve as alternatives to the police are underfunded, scrambling for grant money to stay alive while being forced to interact with officers who often make their jobs even harder. Moving towards a police-free society is a process that requires gradual steps and will take time to accomplish. It is not about snapping our fingers and instantly defunding every department in the world. Rather, we're talking about a gradual process of strategically reallocating resources, funding, and responsibility away from police into a community-based models of safety, support, and prevention. A major step will be demilitarization. The people who respond to crises in our community should be the people who are best equipped to deal with those crises. Rather than strangers armed with guns who very likely do not live in the neighborhoods they're patrolling, we want to create space for more mental health service providers, social workers, victims/ survivor advocates, religious leaders, neighbors, and friends, all of the people who really make up the fabric of our community, to look out for one another. In this transition process, we will need a small specialized class of public servants whose job is to respond to violent crimes. But part of what we're talking about here is what role police play in our society. Right now, cops don't just respond to violent crimes. They make needless traffic stops, arrest petty drug users, harass black and brown people, and engage in a wide range of broken windows policing behaviors that only serve to keep more people under the thumb of the criminal justice system. The city should opt for a pared-down security team with first responders, other city officials, and social workers responsible for much of the current work of DCPD officers. This organization cannot be born of the current police force. The institutional rot goes deep. No training or new figurehead will change it. This is because the current training program for the police teaches a shoot-to-kill mentality, encourages the use of force in situations where de-escalation efforts by trained professionals would serve better. If you are genuinely interested in learning more about the current issues with policing and what needs to be done, there's a link to a free ebook. I encourage you to pass a strong resolution in support of black lives. As it stands, the current resolution doesn't make any commitments to lay the groundwork to establish a community oversight commission, establish a human rights commission, and to reallocate some DCPD funds towards community services like affordable housing, libraries, parks and rec, and the community service center. Please add these actions as part of your commitment to the resolution. Please ensure a thoughtful deliberative and community participatory process as we figure out how to do this together. Thank you. Okay. The next one is from Isabella Perez. It says, good evening, City Council and Mayor Sylvester. My name is Isabella Perez, and I have family who reside in Daly City. Let's reimagine and create a safer community for all of us, especially for black lives. The safest communities in America are places that don't center the police. In Daly City, we center the police with forty-one percent of the city's budget going to DCPD, the largest allocation of any kind for our city. Let's shift massive spending on police that do not keep us safe and instead reinvest in human services that meet our community's needs. The center of every city should be the community. By centering your community, you will be listening to their needs. Mental health services, resources, and programs for our youth, immigrants, victims of sexual abuse, etc. Every single family in Daly City should feel like they are being supported and valued based on the services that you provide and fund. If you center your funding around the police instead of other holistic programs, you are not listening to the community. These programs will reduce crime because they are meeting the needs of the community. Police have been placed in the sorry, police have placed the power to handle these problems and in turn have escalated, instead of de-escalating, and have created fear instead of safety. I encourage you to pass a strong resolution in support of black lives. As it stands, the current resolution doesn't make any commitments to lay the groundwork to establish a community oversight commission, establish a human rights commission, and to reallocate some DCPD funds towards community services like affordable housing, libraries, parks and rec, and the community service center. Please add these actions as part of your commitment in the resolution. Please ensure a thoughtful deliberative and community participatory process as we figure out how to do this together. Thank you. The next comment is from Eduardo Uniso Jr. To the Daly City Council, in light of the recent tragic events that have highlighted the prevalence of racism and police brutality deeply embedded in our nation, I commend the city's adoption of a Black Lives Matter resolution. However, while the resolution is in good faith, I believe that the City Council can do a lot more. While a resident of South San Francisco, I have lived in Daly City in the past, and I continue to frequently visit family, friends, and enjoy what the city has to offer. As a neighbor, it is my duty to ensure that my community has what it needs to thrive. Let's not kid ourselves and dance around the fact that Black Lives Matter movement has been sprung off by the very overt oppression caused by the police institution and white supremacy. Leaving your community, and we say that it is not the individual police officer that we are condemning, but rather the institution itself. As stated in your resolution, be it further resolved that the city of Daly City works proactively to create a welcoming, safe, and inclusive community, promotes equitable protection of constitutional and human rights, and the city acknowledges the history of institutional racism that exists in America and commits to move forward with efforts that shall include reviewing police policies to meet community needs and achieve better outcomes, and engaging in dialogue with residents to hear their concerns and ideas and continuously earn public trust. End quote. And to that point, the act of solidarity is not just in the name itself, but in how one proves that with tangible and restorative action. Let us acknowledge how Daly City upholds and participates in institutional racism, but more importantly, that the city takes the necessary steps to dismantle that in order to truly stand in solidarity in their commitment to racial equity. Thereby, I urge the Daly City Council to include in their resolution their commitment to creating a community oversight police commission, which will provide the comprehensive community oversight and ensure accountability and transparency of the Daly City Police Department. And let us to acknowledge the fact that DCPD comprises forty percent of the overall budget, and it is time to change that. The problem with police is that their role asks far too much, from dealing with mental illness, to homelessness, to substance abuse, etc. Therefore, I urge the Daly City Council to commit in their resolution to reallocate DCPD's budget into resources proven to address the needs of the community. We ask that the city take a proactive approach to addressing public health and safety rather than a reactive approach in which the police come into play. Now, I believe in your ability as a governing body, and I believe in our ability as a community that we can all help foster an environment that is not afraid to admit its own faults and imperfections, but one that accepts it and will actively grow from it, that we will be better than the past that was written for us, because now we together will write our future. Please consider adopting these commitments in your resolution. Thank you. The next one is from Adrian Manuel Batuain. Good evening, City Council and Mayor Sylvester. My name is Adrian Manuel Batuain, and I am a longtime Daly City resident. Let's reimagine and create a safer community for all of us, especially for black lives. The safest communities in America are places that don't center the police. Daly City, we center the police with forty-one percent of the city's budget going to DCPD, the largest allocation of any kind for our city. Let's shift massive spending on police that do not keep us safe and instead reinvest in human services that meet our community's needs. I encourage you to pass a strong resolution in support of black lives. As it stands, the current resolution doesn't make any commitments to lay the groundwork to establish a community oversight commission, establish a human rights commission, and to reallocate some DCPD funds towards community services like affordable housing, libraries, parks and rec, and the community service center. Please add these actions as part of your commitment in the resolution. Please ensure a thoughtful deliberative and community participatory process as we figure out how to do this together. Thank you. This is from Jose Villalobos. Good evening, City Council and Mayor Sylvester. I would like to thank the Daly City City Council for their recent conversations on community and police relations. The current resolution is not enough. I hope that these, I hope that after these conversations, the City Council, that council members understand the need for a community oversight commission and the need to prioritize funds to other areas of the city budget. Instead of approving funds to build walls around the police station, I believe the City Council should build bridges by investing in community services, recreational activities, and more efficient library services. Please move forward in building bridges with the community, not investing in walls. Next comment is from Brianna Sanco Lee. Good evening, City Council and Mayor Sylvester. My name is Brianna Sanco Lee, and I'm a Daly City resident. Let's reimagine and create a safer community for all of us, especially for black lives. The safest communities in America are places that don't center the police. In Daly City, we center the police with forty-one percent of the city's budget going to DCPD, the largest allocation of any kind for our city. Let's shift massive spending on police that do not keep us safe and instead reinvest in human services that meet our community's needs. I encourage you to pass a strong resolution in support of black lives. As it stands, the current resolution doesn't make any commitments to lay the groundwork to establish a community oversight commission, establish a human rights commission, and to reallocate some DCPD funds towards community services like affordable housing, libraries, parks and rec, and the community service center. Please add these actions as part of your commitment in the resolution. Please ensure a thoughtful deliberative and community participatory process as we figure out how to do this together. Thank you. Next comment is from Henry Francisco. I'm Henry Francisco, and I'm a Daly City resident. Please pass a stronger resolution to support black lives with clear commitments to reallocate DCPD funding to community resources and the creation of a community police oversight commission. As leaders, I hope you can reimagine what public safety looks like for Daly City, especially for black lives, people of color, and immigrants. By shifting the budget and power, we can shift Daly City culture so that it is safer for all of us. The safest communities in America are places that don't center the police. In Daly City, we center the police with forty-one percent of the city's budget going to DCPD, the largest allocation of any kind for our city. Okay. The next comment is from Kaylee Kerr. I'm not sure if this person spoke earlier already.
Yes, she did.
Yeah, it was me.
Okay, I skipped that one. The next one is from Nick Ochi Pinti. I believe he's actually in the meeting. I saw him join. Okay, I can read it.
Would you like me to speak or?
If you would like to read your comment, since you're here, you're more than welcome, or I can read it.
Oh, you can read if you want. Are you talking to me?
No, I'm sorry, Kylie. I'm talking to Nick.
Actually, if you would read Kylie's first, and then I can go after that.
Yeah, Kylie already spoke tonight, so that's why I skipped it.
Nick, what would you? Sure, yeah. I can, I can speak as well. So my comment basically says what a lot of people have been saying all night, and I want to appreciate the fact that this has been brought forth to the City Council and has been given some consideration. But like most people are saying, this resolution, at the most, is a first step in affirming and acknowledging systemic racism and institutionalized discrimination, which our city is not immune to and indefinitely plays a part in. And in passing the resolution, it should have the strength of conviction to express these injustices by saying as many names as possible, but furthermore, you know, taking steps to do justice to those names and to those lives and to our communities by looking at what systemic racism is, and we talk about that, what our system is doing to either fund solutions or not. And so if we are looking at real solutions, we have to understand where the problem actually is in addressing those root causes. And so as we've been meeting, seeing these meetings for the last two months, there has been progress, and I think this is not necessarily a culmination or just an endpoint for these things, but at the very starting point and as appreciated, but we need to go beyond just resolutions, and I think today is a good place to begin convening these commissions, police commission, human rights commission, and really drafting legislation and looking at redrafting a budget that looks at further investment in our departments that have been defunded historically. Do they recreation, library, and even departments that haven't even been created in our community, which really speak to the depth of the community services that we need in our community? And we see that because as a school district, we and our school districts across the state and the country are doing the best we can. Yeah, so we expect that from the City Council as well. Thank you.
Okay, the next online comment is from Nadia Conrad Bick. It says, your voice and your story matters. Have you ever experienced racial profiling or felt unsafe because of DCPD? Perhaps you've been impacted by the defunding of community services like affordable housing and libraries that serve you and your family. Share your personal experience, and if you have data/facts to support your story, you can add that too. Always end with an ask to guide the council on their decision. I.e., please add a commitment to create an oversight commission prior to the resolution. And the next comment is from Kim Westrick. Thank you for this BLM resolution. Please intentionally add black women and transgender people's names such as Toni McDade and Sandra Bland. And that is the last online comment.
All right, thank you, Mr. Salty. Good job in creating transparency and allowing the comments to be read. At this time, I am going to close the public meeting at this comment period at this particular time. So last that I recall, we were on item number five in the adding of names. I had brought up an additional part of the resolution pertaining to possible exclusivity of other residents within the city of Daly City. And so I'll like to entertain any comments on that thought, and I did get a few earlier. And comments were made like we are dealing with Black Lives Matter at this particular time. One of the comments that I've heard is to add LGBTQ names or individuals as well. So basically, I'm opening this up at this time to get a feel from my council members as to to ensure that this resolution is not excluding anyone. So are there any comments on this? In other words, are we affirming that Black Lives Matter movement is the issue at hand, but we as a city will extend the same protections to not only black lives, brown lives, you know, all of the folks who reside in our city?
Mayor, if I may speak on the dais, I, I think we have affirmed that in our previous resolutions that we are a city that is inclusive and diverse, and we support everyone. And we've done that in the past. I think particularly this evening, we need to focus on the Black Lives Matter movement and specifically on this. I do not think we need to add all lives because it, as mentioned earlier, it will dilute the messaging that we want to pursue this evening. And so I think, you know, And so I think, you know, we have affirmed what you've mentioned in our past resolutions. And for this particular resolution this evening, I do not think we need to have, add all, all lives.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Okay, are there any other comments?
Mr. Mayor, can I add stuff or add some comments? I would like to just incorporate some of the guests or some of the comments that were spoken during public comment and see if we can add some of these items that a lot of these speakers have been talking about, like developing an oversight community that represents Daly City residents, but also with the police. I know that there's other commissions that are out there. I believe there was one that was created in Fremont where it's like an integrated representation of from youth to city council members to different leaders in the public in their, in their area. Also, I know that, I'm not, I'm not sure if I'm right or not, but I believe South San Francisco has also put together, is starting to put together some sort of oversight committee that has representation that, that, that is kind of like an oversight committee. Where we could actually talk about things like reinvesting into parks and rec and senior services. And it's a collaborative committee. I also want to add something about developing a human rights committee. I mean, for me, I think it's, it's more than just looking at the police brutality. I think what some of my, I guess, counterpoints is that it's only specifically looking at police brutality. What I'm looking at is Human Rights Commission so that we can have a commission that looks like, that looks at the social justice and equity issues in Daly City, right? Everything from workers' rights to housing to, you know, having more ethnic studies in our schools, right? And I think that, I don't know why, what is wrong with that? You know, I've seen the countless signatures for having an anti-human rights commission. Like for me, I feel like when I think of a human rights commission, I think it's something positive. Like it's looking at what is there or what is not there and making our city or committee more equitable, right? So those are just my thoughts. Like how can we add some more? I think a lot of the questions, a lot of themes that I heard in the, in the public comment is the how. And I don't want it just to be this symbolic gesture, but I also wanted to have some teeth towards doing something. Either having a oversight committee, a human rights commission, or something that, that we can have moving forward than, instead of just having something that's very symbolic. So how do we go from the symbolic to the reality part of it?
Thank you, Dr. Rod. Are there any other comments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. So let me, let me start with the Vice Mayor's comment about her wanting to keep it about Black Lives Matter and not necessarily broaden the scope to all lives matter. I wholeheartedly agree with that and I think we should keep the resolution centered and focused on Black Lives Matter. So that's that comment. With respect to Dr. Rod's, that's my wild comment about having some teeth and action items. I will say that I wholeheartedly agree that we need to do something, okay? But I understand as a council member, as an elected body, we have to go through a process to vet these ideas and not just throw it up in a resolution because it sounds good. So what I'm, what I, what I have heard from the comments by the public is that this is good that we're bringing this up. This is a good first step. But I think clearly, we all agree, this is not the only step. And in fact, this sort of just, we wanted to put a resolution so that the community knows that we are behind the Black Lives Matter movement. Now, the specifics and the action that we actually take, it's unfortunate, but it does take some time. It takes time to vet the ideas. It takes time to talk about these ideas with staff, with the council, to talk about the budget, to talk about the personnel, to talk about the legality of, and to talk about the parameters and the constitution of how we're going to effectuate change in Daly City. I'm not forecasting. I'm not agreeing or disagreeing with the ideas that have been coming up, but I am saying that we need to work through it. And just because we passed this resolution doesn't mean it's going to be the end of it. It's, and I agree completely with the, with the community in the comments. This is a first step and emphasizing it's not the only step. And we understand that we need to have some deliverables. We need to do something to address this problem. I wholeheartedly believe that this is an issue, that there is systemic racism, that there are things that we can do to begin to untangle that and expose it and to address it. How we do it is, is a not-so-simple process. And, and we want to get it right. And so we are having these discussions. We are having these open communications with the public because we need, we want the feedback. And so we're, we're not, we're not, we're a council that wants to do things that, that, that care about the community, who care about this issue. And so I do believe that we are going to mobilize and to come with ideas and action items that we can commit to. And so I'm confident that we will get there. It may not be perfect, but I know we're going to do something as a, as a body. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Buena Ventura. Are there any other comments before I make a comment?
Mr. Mayor, may I make a comment or I can comment after you if you'd like.
Go ahead, please proceed.
Okay. Well, today I'm glad we're here to approve, you know, a resolution to support and acknowledge the Black Lives Matter movement. I think the very first step we had was having the study session. I don't think this is our first step. Our first step was actually reaching out to our community members and asking and hearing from them. Now today is the second step. You know, we're, we're moving towards action on what we can do to address systemic and racial inequities. And I truly believe we need a comprehensive approach. You know, there's not one solution and it's going to be a concerted effort on so many levels. And I want to share some of my thoughts. You know, some committee members have heard defund the police and many of them are fearful of what this means for their safety, right? But some of them don't understand what it means because they just don't understand exactly what that might entail. And so as a policymaker, you know, one of the issues I care about is safety. You know, this is important to me because I'm raising my family here in my hometown. But this doesn't mean we can't do better and reexamine where we can change and stop the criminalization of black lives and people of color. So, you know, as a young lady in the last meeting explained, said it's a reimagining and reexamining way you can assess the budget and possibly reallocate what can be done, you know, when there's mental health specialists during emergency calls or looking at ways to put dollars to youth development opportunities, right? And so I think there are ideas, you know, I'd like to see implicit bias training, not only with DCPD, but in all departments, commissions, and even with our city council here. You know, it's looking at a very comprehensive way. Why can't we bring educational opportunities to our residents? Forums, films, bring ethnic studies accessible to our residents at large. You know, I see the idea of looking at a comprehensive human rights commission on a vast array of social justice issues. I mean, even looking at maybe symbolic ways of looking at our thoroughfares or streets, renaming them in honor of our, these black heroes and heroines such as Harriet Tubman. I mean, I think this resolution is our next action step along to the response to eight can't wait from our DCPD. There was a response to the community with that. So I am in deep appreciation with the collective ideas that has been brought forth here from the community and with my colleagues. I'm hopeful that, you know, we will create a holistic approach to address systemic and institutionalized racism. And it's really through time and we, it's not because we don't take action swiftly. It's because we want to look at it in a holistic and comprehensive manner. And so I am looking forward to working with all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. All right, I'd like to make a few comments if I may. Throughout the conversation and all the, all the meetings that we've had on this issue, I learned a new term that has come out. Well, basically, it's a word that everybody knows and the term I heard is reimagine. Well, you know, I cannot reimagine, especially in the area of public safety. I look at what our city has done, our police officers, and the use of force, working with hearing from the community and immediately making changes on the eight can't wait aspects and changes have been made. Now, I remind you, if Daly City were to incorporate all of these changes, that would contribute to approximately seventy-two percent less chance of violence. Well, we, we haven't had an issue with the use of force and violence. Then when we're talking about defunding police, as one council member aptly mentioned, that we need to study this. All the information I have been receiving from the, from the public is forty-one percent, forty percent. Well, how does that compare to the other cities as to how much they are spending on their police resources and personnel? We all know that Daly City has one of the lowest capita of police per person in Daly City. Now, I've heard the term, I've heard folks say, well, do you need someone with a gun to show up at a mental health crisis call? Well, we can debate on that, but what folks need to know is that's an official part of the uniform. Whether the officer goes into the store to have lunch or whether an officer responds to a domestic violence, the gun is part of the uniform. So, you know, we need to consider all of that. Now, someone, well, before I get to that point, I also wanted to make mention about justice versus reparations. What are we looking at here? Are we looking at for reparations for what has transpired over the past years? It's not going to happen overnight. We need to work forward to a method to ensure that moving forward in the future, that the awareness that has been brought up today, and that's the issue on black lives, which leads me to a comment that someone made, which I wholeheartedly agree. The Constitution made mention by Thomas Jefferson that everyone here in the United States is entitled to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. But that has not been the case in the area of black lives. You know, I thought about that. And yes, the evidence shows that and has brought me to change my mind and move forward that this awareness we need to bring forward. And we will bring this forward because the evidence shows that it has not been the same for every diverse culture. So another comment I heard, "The city is not immune." You are absolutely correct. The city is not immune. However, the city has done very well, especially our police force. They have done very well to lump the police into a category that says, "Well, if you're a police officer in New York or you're a police officer in Minnesota, you're, you're, you do the same thing and your training is the same." That is wrong, completely wrong. And we have the stats in Daly City to show that. Now, if we want, I want to remind everyone, and I've heard this and I've heard it from the Vice Mayor and Councilmember Buena Ventura. We have offered full and complete transparency. We've got the public's thoughts, their ideas. This is something that's not going to occur overnight. This is one step in moving forward to other things that will come later on. This is not the end-all, be-all solution. But we as a city, we care about our folks and our constituents and our residences. We care about Daly City. And it's not only going to pertain to Daly City PD, as the Vice Mayor says. It's going to pertain to every department in our city to ensure equality, equity, and that we are cognizant of especially persons of color to get rid as much as systemic racism, if it exists, in our city. So with that being said, I'm all forward with moving in support of the Black Lives Matter resolution. However, I am not in support of all the specifics. Until we look at all the specifics to make our resolution stronger, and specifically that's action items. We cannot make a decision, or at least I cannot make that decision, without looking at the overall picture as to how that would affect our city, the services we provide to the folks here in Daly City. So that's my comment and I thank you all so much. Okay, are there any comments on this? Okay, hearing none. We had a motion on the floor to add the additional names and it was amended. And the meeting tonight is to move forward with this resolution on Black Lives Matter. Does anyone want to make a motion on approving this resolution as the way it stands now?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make another friendly amendment to my motion earlier. In the chat, there was additional names that community members had mentioned, Sandra Bland and Toni McDade. I just want to make sure it's spelled correctly, but I, McDade, M-C-D-A-D. And I'd like to add those names in my motion.
Absolutely, Vice Mayor, and I would second that motion. Okay, are there any further comments before we move on to motion? Okay, hearing none. Madam City Attorney, would it be appropriate in this matter to do a roll call on this? Or just, okay. All right, on the motion with the amendments that has been provided, Madam City Clerk, may I have, I'm going to call the question at this time. May I have a roll call, please?
Certainly. Ms. Manalo?
Aye.
Dr. Rod?
Aye.
Mr. Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Aye. All right, I'd like to thank everyone so much. I'd like to thank the folks who have logged on to provide their comments and thoughts this evening. And rest assured, we will definitely keep you posted and in the loop as we move forward into the future. Excuse me. So I thank you all so much. I wish you have a great evening. Stay healthy, stay strong. We are Daly City Strong. Thank you.